On her way. So, we are going to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Hamilton County County Commissioners, 3/20/25. This is our legislative meeting. Commissioner Reese is on her way. So, we've gotten the nod. Go ahead and get started. So, that's what we're going to do. So, we start our meetings with a silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance. So, please join us in silent prayer. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance is to the people of the United States of America. Intervent public, religious persons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to make a motion that we approve of the minutes of the previous session?
Second, Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes. Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Okay. Very good. We'll move into the comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Thank you so much. Just a few things this week. Finally, you've probably been getting tired of me talking about my AI training because I've been so excited. But it's finally over. I'm a graduate of the Leadership Academy. So, I just would advocate for other people to take it and use it. Because it's here. We can't not use it because everyone else is using it. And we don't want to be behind. Okay? So, and then the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, they had their 10-year anniversary. I know you will talk more about that. And then I did an interview with the Soapbox Entity. And they do newsletters as it relates to the first suburbs outside of Cincinnati. And they wanted to do an interview with me since I had been the mayor of Forest Park and the village manager of Lincoln Heights. And now, county commissioner and how I ended up here. So, I think it'll be great. It was very interesting. I was very willing to do it as I go on my political travels. And so, I'm not real sure when it will appear in the paper. But I'll be sure to let you know, you know that. Okay? And so, today, oh, also, I had Human Services Committee. I had a webinar through CCAO. And they are looking primarily at House Bill 58, which is the legislation for recovery housing. And they indicated, the commissioners indicated that there are a lot of bad partners that are getting money for recovery housing. And so, there, and we are in the process of kind of editing the legislation to make sure that people that gets funding for recovery housing is doing the right thing. So, that's what I'm working on now. And now, I'm very happy. Once a month, we have Inspire Initiative to come forth and talk about some of the groups in the community that we're helping. And they're helping the community by my colleagues who have approved the Inspire Initiative. And so, Robert Bell is here, who's the director of that initiative. And I thank him for coming. And I thank him for taking it on. And I thank him for working with Alice and making things happen.
Thank you.
But that's what Mr. Bell does. He makes things happen.
We try, we try. Thanks for having us. And I just want to say that I usually let Alice do this, but I had to come up today because I'm looking at some of these numbers. And, you know, we've had three complete rounds and 145 programs. Twenty, over 23,000 youth benefited from this program. And we spent over 704,000 on these programs. But, but the results have been amazing. I'm hearing about it because, you know, I'm in the community a lot. And I'm hearing about it all the time. And people are just saying how much they appreciate it. And like, you know, Commissioner O'Dumas had said before, it's like we gave them, you know, 20, 30, $40,000. But it just helps them get, you know, get over the hump with what they're trying to do for these youth. And we see the, we see the results. So, we're just pleased to be a part of it. And I'm just thrilled with it myself. And I'm, again, I think it's changing the way and improving the way and helping the way that people view Hamilton County and, and, and our, and our great county. So, thank you. And I'll.
Thank you.
I'll introduce Alice to introduce our guest.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Alice Bletto. And today, I'm pleased to welcome Shannon Carr from Isaiah 55. Shannon's doing incredible work in the community. She's cultivating gardens, providing nourishment for those in need. And she can tell you more about it though because she's the one that does the work. But we are appreciative. And Shannon, come on up.
Good morning. I am Shannon Carr. And I'm founder and CEO of Isaiah 55 Incorporated. Where our mission is we grow food to feed the less fortunate healthier options. And how we do that, we, we have gardens in different areas of the city. In fact, I was here at this when they had the delinquent sale auction in this room, buying land to put our gardens on. And so, we also have a restaurant in East Price Hill. It's called Garden of Eaton where everything is free. We rescue food and we cook it up and we feed people. And we actually are going mobile now. We received a van from Rees, Hamilton County Resource. And that will be unveiled next week. And so, our project was to do stories and have children write their own story. So, we gave them blank books and all of the school supplies. We made smoothies, soups, and salads. And so, it didn't go like we wanted to at first because we had a lot of parents who signed up. But those people did not show up. So, what we did is we go outside and we just round up a group of kids. And we get the kids to come and we feed them. We tell them, tell them stories. And, you know, they make their story. And we also give them books. And so, that was, it was challenging at first. But it was amazing towards the end. So, now, we want to continue to do this program. And so, with us going mobile, you know, last week, we were with the 513 Relief Bus. We go with them often. And we, we stop and we just show up. We, we, we can't plan anything now because when we plan it, it does not go right. But when you show up and you have fresh produce and salads, people will come. If you build it, they will come. And so, the people come and they also, they are excited. Because salads is so expensive. And so, we get all of this fresh lettuce. We rescue food from the farm. And this is lettuce that you don't even see at Kroger's. And it is beautiful. And so, we, we also use things that come out of the garden. We are very excited because it's almost time for the berries to come up. And we can have berries. And we had dried cherries yesterday in the salads. But we'll have fresh berries and everything that's coming out of the garden in our salads. And I just want to say thank you to everyone right here. Because, because you said yes, we were able to do smoothies. We were able to do salads. And we were, and let me tell you about the soups. I like creating. We also made some carrot pie. We introduced the community to carrot pie. And I gave it to people. We just drove around. We gave it to the kids. They liked this, some good sweet potato pie. No, it's carrots. And they like, ew, I don't eat carrots. But you just did. And so, now, everybody wants carrot pie. When you making a carrot pie? And so, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And this is what Inspire Initiative is about. So, thank you so much.
First of all, I would like to get the recipe for the carrot pie. I make pies. I've never made a carrot pie. So, I'll look forward to that, getting that from you. Can you, so beyond the funding from the Inspire program, where, do you have additional funding and where does it come from?
The actual restaurant, we got funding from Feeding America. Because I gave them a pitch. A restaurant was closed and I gave them this quick pitch. And they said, okay. And so, we got the funding for that. We get funding from the Boots on the Ground. We got the Boots on the Ground from the city. We get, we have, our gardens is with Keep Cincinnati Beautiful. We have some private funding. But our biggest funders, it's pretty much the Keep Cincinnati Beautiful and the Boots on the Ground, anything Cincinnati Foundation, the city and things like that. But the largest funding to date was for the van.
Yeah.
It was for the van.
Through Resource.
And also, to turn the restaurant into a licensed canning facility. So, the food that we grow, we'll can it. So, you don't really have to go to progress to get your canned green beans. You can kind of come to us. And so, we also just bought some farmland. And so, to expand. Because with a, with a cannery, you need way more green beans.
That's great. So, and it occurs to me, the Farm Bureau used to do similar work where they'd set up in a community, usually at a head start, and do smoothies and salads. So, I don't know if that's a partnership that you've explored, but they might be willing to partner with you. I just throw it out there.
This is who?
The Farm Bureau.
Okay, let's call them.
Yeah, I mean, they're farmers, right? So, they've got the produce. And so, they were looking for a way to introduce people throughout the community to the different kinds of produce. It sounds like exactly what your carrot, carrot pie would be a good example of that. So, it sounds a lot like what you're doing. So, it might be a way to partner with them to get more resources in for what you're doing. But congratulations to Commissioner O'Dumas for having yet another program come before us and, and talk to us about how the resources are being used from the county. It's just a really great program. And I'm thrilled to see what you're doing. I'm going to check you out next time I'm in East Price Hill.
Please do.
On Warsaw Avenue. I can't believe I've missed you. But anyway, I'll get there eventually. Thank you.
And that carrot pie, however you make your sweet potato or pumpkin pie, same ingredients. Just steam your carrots.
Really? All right, I'm going to do it. I make a good sweet potato pie. So, I'll, I'll try that.
I want to also thank Commissioner O'Dumas for bringing this program before us and also showing that voting for this program has extended legs. Because we voted for an investment, but also these groups like yourself, organizations, you've already made an investment and this allows it to just grow. The other thing is that it also allows us to have a partnership of things that we may not know. And Alice bringing these to us, there may be other things that we have, like she said, the Farm Bureau, other stuff that might be able to connect, to continue, to help with everything that you're doing. The other thing is we talk a lot about inner-city, urban farming, if you will. And I remember when I was at the state, well, Central State was one with their program. And they were looking for programs like yourself. Amber Twitty is the person, I believe, that works with that extension program. But just to see that this works, what you're doing already. And I just, I am excited. I don't know, Alice, these programs, I'm sure we have them. But it'd be great to have some videos if we don't that people can participate. But if you do this video, can you please put that recipe for the carrot? I think we'll get a lot of hits, a lot of views will be. If you put that on there, people will be tuning in on. Because I just can't imagine carrot cake and sweet potato pie tasting the same. And then, what you talked about too, the canning and, I mean, that whole process and the fact that it's happening right here in Hamilton County in the urban core. I mean, I don't know. I just think the how-to, I mean, I'm looking at TikTok video. I mean, I just feel like this is huge. Because a lot of people have been talking about, we need to do it and how to do it. And now, more people are interested because of also health. People are more interested in doing where they can grow their own and they know it's fresh. So, now, we have a new generation. And I'm glad you're doing with the kids because the generation, they will grow up doing that. We didn't necessarily grow up doing it. My, you know, maybe my grandma did. But, you know, we. We didn't necessarily grow up doing it, my, you know, maybe my grandma did, but you know, we, we didn't do that. So this is just changing the whole trajectory and it also has a big health component into it as well. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Really appreciate everything you're doing.
Do the video. And Shannon's been with the 513 bus a few times.
Oh yeah, but did you bring the carrot cake to the 513? I need to, I need to be advertising. Come to the 513 relief bus, carrot cake while it lasts.
We had carrot cake at Hamilton County Fairgrounds last year. Resource was doing something and I just bought a whole bunch of it and just like, taste this.
Yeah, carrot pie. I just, oh, I was, it'd be great to have a cooking demonstration.
Well, maybe next time you come before us.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe you bring a carrot pie.
Just invite me, I'll come.
Commissioner Dumas, we need to work on.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, for sure. I just have one final word as it relates to what I've been given it. I think all of you have, may have it. But Inspire purchase, just specifically with the money markers, food containers, meat prep items, books, blank books, as you were talking, inspirational books and cooking, educational books. And you helped over 100 youth, I'm sure it's more than 100. And so you were looking at 12 years and up, but whoever needs to help, you give it to them. And so you have a partner or someone with you, don't you?
She don't want to get up here.
Okay, so, so who is that?
This is Vida, this is my daughter. She, I was actually pregnant with Vida when I wrote the vision for Isaiah 55.
Okay.
And so now she's taken it to a different level because she knows things that I don't, you know, I'm old school. She's the new school.
Okay, very good.
One thought, let's go mobile.
Okay, awesome. So we're, if we can take a picture.
Oh, sure.
It'd be great. Yeah, we're going to come down there where you are.
I wish. All right, Commissioner, is that?
That's it.
Yep, okay. Commissioner Reese.
Okay, thank you very much. Trying to find my notes here. I was getting excited about the sweet potato pie and carrot pie. Man, maybe the doctor will approve the carrot pie. Sweet potato pie, he said, too much for me. I said, ah. Okay, well, just wanted to, a couple of things. One, the research. Mr. Ludo, can we get with the clerk's office to deal with a parking situation? Because there's a lot of trucks coming and, you know, they have to make their deliveries. But I don't know, in five years, this is my fifth year, this is kind of the worst we've gotten on the parking. Even truck deliveries getting with Kroger and how they, they've been here. I don't know how it isn't working now. So I just wanted to, we got to come up with something. Because I'm, I'm downstairs and stuck and can't get around the corner to park. So, and they just kind of pull up and jump out and put their emergencies on and just traffic jams and those kind of things. So we got to come up with some kind of process. Secondly, I do want to thank the sheriff's office, though we have now sheriff's deputies, I believe, but they're on bikes. And they're in the, in the area around the courthouse and around in front of our building, but also the Kroger area around this area. And I think I want to thank her for that and they're doing a good job. And they're also able to help provide direction to those who may need to be helped. So I do appreciate, I do appreciate them being here. I would like to see, however, I know we put some funding toward these monitors or whatever they're called, ambassadors. They're supposed to be helping people who may need help, mental health, homelessness. Maybe they could look at what the sheriff is doing and that's what I was looking for, to have these services. I still to this day have not seen anybody from the, that funding with the homelessness or what have you. I don't know if it's Coalition or I don't know if it's, whoever it is, we put money toward it. I'm expecting to see what I see with the sheriff's office. Give me some T-shirts. Let me see, identify yourself. I want to see that you help some people. Then I want to get a report who got helped and what was the needs. And I think that would be helpful to us because there are people that do need assistance. In addition, I attended, I want to thank the Prince Hall Mason's Midwest Convention for coming here. They were from 11 different states. And their host hotel was the Hyatt. And they certainly spent money and lots of events. And I want to thank them for coming to the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And it started raining, so I'm like, well, y'all don't have to come there. He's like, no, we have to come. And they were down there dancing, people from Missouri and people from Illinois and Louisville and other places. And so it was really great. Some of them do come, they said annually for the last 30 years, to the Cincinnati Music Festival. And they said they didn't know it was down there, they're going to bring more people down. Want to thank, they, they were very complimentary to Sorda and Darryl Haley for being very helpful with their convention because of the construction. They had to move their events to different places because of course, the convention center's not open. So they moved to different places downtown, but Sorda helped them move these folks around to be able to have a good, a good convention. So they were very, very positive with that. And then I want to thank Jackie Tiger Boyd from my office, who also helped coordinate with them to try to make sure that they had everything that they needed. And we also was able to get a welcome on behalf of our, of our board welcoming them to, to Cincinnati. So that was really big because it moves around, it won't be here, back here for another 11 years. So I was very happy about that. Also attended the Princeton City Schools District Annual Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame Induction Ceremony. And I was very proud to write one of the recommendations, be part of the group. But more importantly, I'm very proud that our very own Veda Stevens was this year's Hall of Famer at Princeton High School Alumni. He's back there being modest. Thank you very much, thank you very much. But it was, it was really, really awesome. Also got a chance, we honored Brent Billingsley, the artist who is fighting cancer and is documenting it. And he just, he is such a loving and giving person to the youth. He just will not stop. And so he and I was on a health segment, dealing with cancer advocacy and awareness with Liz Bonis on Local 12, her, her health segment. And I want to thank her for that. I got a chance to talk about why I think the Cancer Caucus is so important. Because cancer rates in Hamilton County have gone up. And we have got to get together, all of us, all hands on deck and work on, how do we get early detection? How do we get them to go down? He admits that his work came before his health. And now he's, you know, he ended up in this position where it's a really, really tough stage. And he's fighting it and doing a great job and keeping a positive attitude. So I do want to thank Liz for having us on her health segment on Local 12. And she does a great job. I was sitting there learning some more stuff as she was doing other segments. I was like, let me write this down. I need to do this and I need to do that. So I thank her for what she, what she does every week. Also had a good meeting with Jennifer Moore from Kroger's. And as many may remember, when I first came with the idea of a 513 relief bus, it's not like it is now because we didn't have it. And I wanted to make sure that we had some private and public. And Kroger's was the first to step up and said, hey, we'll put up 20,000. Now we, we didn't collect it quick enough, so now we're trying to get back to the 20,000. But we have a partnership now that they would like to do with our 513 relief bus, where we could be at some of the Kroger stores. And I think that would be huge for us and a huge partnership with the local, a, a national business that is headquartered here locally. So I was very excited about that and looking forward to some upcoming schedules and dates. And we're looking at trying to have a kickoff at one of the Kroger's and then of course have several others. So I know that we'll have follow-up with Trevina and Lisa to, to seal that. But I was happy that she was interested and said, hey, let's get back to this 513 relief bus, because you guys have done such a great job. So excited about that. Also participated in the Human Services Chamber Policy Committee along with Commission President Dre House. And I, my mind was on 513 relief bus. I had asked Mike Morowski to come on and talk about what's going on with the 513 relief bus, because we have a lot of partners. He then said, okay, that's great, we're going to expand it. And he invited a lot of people, which was great. And then he said, I, I know you care with the idea, but now I have five minutes for you. So we took the five minutes and made something out of it. Because a lot of them are not involved but want to be involved. And so now we can increase our partnerships. So we're happy about that. I know they had asked Commission President Dre House to talk about a different subject, as well as State Representative Dunney Isaacs. And Congressman Landsman's office was also represented, which really could be its own meeting. Because there's a lot going on in Washington and a lot of questions that we, that we all have. In addition, 513 relief bus will be out. And people can go to 513relief.org Tuesday, 25th. They're in OTR at Ohio Means Jobs. They're Saturday, they're the 29th, they're in Forest Park at the new Forest Park Library. Then they're Monday to 31st, they're in Westwood at the United Church of Christ. And they are also in the opening day parade. So look for the five. Now they won't be helping people on that one, they'd just be waving. So don't come, come into the bus that day. But they will be riding through and, and waving at you at the, at the opening day parade. The other thing that I wanted to also say, I wanted to thank Wenton Woods and congratulate the girls' basketball team of Wenton Woods and Purcell. Purcell Girls, oh my gosh, I think it's like four Pete, it's hard to get one. They got four. Hopefully we'll be able to get them back here. These young ladies are in their senior year, so they've been doing it since freshman year at Purcell. Wenton Woods Girls won their first ever Girls' State Championship Basketball. And they went 27-0, 27-0. And one of their freshmen and star players, one of the star players, I think she, I think she might have scored 38 points. They call her Strawberry. And I've been watching these kids since they were, you know, really young. And to see her come in and dominate. But the thing I loved about her was that she's a freshman. And she could have said, well, we'll get it next year. She said, I did not want the seniors to lose the state championship. And I didn't want our first loss to be at the state championship, she said. So we had to go ahead and win. I want to thank Principal Eric Martin for inviting me to join them in the parade. They had a parade forum and they asked me to help lead the parade and it was my pleasure. And they did a fantastic job in Forest Park. Officials was there from Forest Park and Springfield Township and Green Hills, because that's the district. And just to see the, the fans, the parents, the supporters, supporting these young people was just phenomenal. And their band is, I mean, that, what, 150 band members that just came back from Orlando, Florida. They were in the, they were invited by Disney World, so you know, they're phenomenal. So it was just great to, to be there and celebrate with them. And I thank them for inviting me to be a part of it. With that being said, we got one more piece of finished business. Aiken High School Boys, they're playing this Friday. And they represent Hamilton County, they represent all the public schools, Cincinnati Public Schools. And the boys are there, they had a hard fought battle. They only got one more stop to go. They asked me, what advice do I have? I said, I never made it to the state championship. I made it to the SWAC championship and, and college city championship, but the state is different. I said, leave it all on the line. It's so hard to get back to, to this point. So good luck, Aiken Boys Basketball. Bring the championship home. And to my colleagues, I usually have the teams come down, we're going to try to have them come down. We're working on a date. My office is working on a date right now with them. So Xavier, this is March Madness, I have to, I stayed up all night. I was supposed to be in the bed. Xavier, I mean, against Texas, that was a game. It looked like we wasn't going to pull it off, but just like the Musketeers, they don't give up. And that was an incredible game. Congratulations Xavier now. They, they, they won their way into the tournament. So we all unite because it's the only Cincinnati team that's going to be in the NCAA tournament. So congratulations to the Xavier Musketeers. Mr. Ludo, my last thing here is I wanted to, something that disturbed me a little bit was, there were a couple of articles actually that disturbing, but this one I want to focus on a little bit. There was an article in the newspaper and it said, Arena Advocacy Group Launches Petition, But Doesn't Share Financial Backers. It goes on to say, a group pushing to, this was in the Inquirer, "A group pushing to use the county sales tax to build a new arena in Cincinnati revealed several endorsements Tuesday, but has refused to say who is financially backing the effort." According to a press release obtained early by the Inquirer, Cincinnati City Council members Miga Owens and Seth Walsh, as well as former Mayor John Cranley, support the Hamilton County Growth Alliance's work to replace the 50-year-old Heritage Bank Center with a state-of-the-art arena. Former City Councilman Chris Borts and community activist Ozzy Davis, who is an employee of the alliance, also backs the group's plans. And then it says, "Led by Cincinnati-based political consultant Jake and Kate, part of the alliance's mission is to boost its plan to finance a new arena using decades-old sales tax that currently pays for the maintenance of both Paycor Stadium and Great American Ballpark." The group put out a petition this week to garner civic support. It goes on to say, of course, they have us, Hamilton County Commissioners Dre House, Summer Dumas and Reese didn't respond to comment on a potential vote to amend the sales tax. They go on to say, they don't know who's funding it. But they go on to also say that what the group wants is that it cannot be on the river. Now, I can only speak for myself. I want to be clear that I've not been against an arena. My question has always been, who's going to pay for it? I know that, I want to be clear, I'm not going to support raising taxes on people on the backs of taxpayers. I'm a little concerned, I won't say a little concerned, I want to just send a quick message. Because City Hall, these are council members. And then Councilmember Seth Walsh writes an editorial, I want to be clear, I know this is an election year for City Council. But I hope that the strategy is not going to be to run against the county. Because if that's the case, I'm going to have to speak out because I've been on City Council. And there's some things that I might not agree with, but I have stayed out of it. So I want to let the people who are running, those that's in and those that's trying to get in, running against the county and all the work that we have done, $60 million in affordable housing for, largest in history, for people who need affordable housing. A 513 relief bus with 30,000 people, we done helping, we done went mobile. The program that we just talked about, Inspire, that Commissioner Dumas has, the women and girls that Commissioner Dre House has started, with pay equity that never- girls that Commissioner Drehouse has started, with pay equity that never existed before. A tourism attraction that is nowhere in the country. A Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, only a half an acre out of 198 acres and has over almost 200,000 visitors and free. And we've tried to work together, but we have a, we had a stadium that's coming up that we got to deal with, with the Bengals, we got a lease that we responsible for, we got to try to dig out of this 94%, 6% deal. We got a Great American Ballpark that's around the corner and that's something we got to deal with as well. So my point is either we're working together or we're not working together. Even our inclusion program, we don't want to talk about those numbers. So my whole point is, I would hope, because I don't think I've ever written, I don't know, and I don't remember seeing my colleagues, writing a op-ed telling City Hall, because we got a lot of city halls, it's not just Cincinnati, we got 49 municipalities, writing what they should be doing with their funding. And my thing is, if you come up with an idea, you should have some money, because I don't come up with any ideas that didn't say the city got to pay for it, Cincinnati. When we come up with an idea, we look at our budget and we work with Jeff Aludo and they meet with us and we try to figure it out. We never come up with an idea and demand a municipality, you gonna pay for our idea. So I just want to be clear, if we gonna go that route, then I got to open up with the experience that I have had on City Council for many years. And there's some things that I see that I might not rock with, but I have stayed out of your business. Now, if you talking about the 25 cent or whatever, the sales tax has got to come through the county, unless Mr. Ludo, when he speaks, hopefully he can tell us, maybe he talked to him. But to come in here and demand us, I mean, I don't really rock like that. I don't get bullied into doing anything. I'm unbought and I'm unbossed. People put me in and I'm not the downtown commission. We've got other municipalities that need some help and assistance too. Anderson Township needs some, Colrain Township needs some, Forest Park needs some, we got a whole lot of people that need some. Springfield Township needs some. We're not just downtown. Mount Healthy needs some. So I was, I don't, I want to try to get us back on the right track, because on one hand, we say, oh, we working together. We ain't working together if council members are writing editorials telling us what to do. We not working together. If they out here with a group that's talking about they gonna put a petition drive to try to put some pressure on us, now the petition drive is the people saying they don't want to pay high taxes. I don't need a petition, I just came out of an election. I heard directly from the voters, 218,000 of them, said they rocking with what I'm talking about. I talked directly to them. So my point is, this is not the way to go. Say, we gonna take your money from the county, we gonna pressure y'all, we gonna come with this, we gonna bring, now we talking about Elon Musk, right? Everybody said they mad. How's he doing this in Washington and he ain't elected? Well, we've been having those kind of operations going on in Cincinnati. Unelected boards, we don't know who on the board, now we got this group, can't find out who they are, we not doing the Elon Musk down here. Well, we had to get elected and we're just shadow, that's called shadow government. The taxpayers, the voters elect somebody and then we put somebody in between them. That's why I always have some issues with some of the stuff. Sometimes I have some issues with 3CDC, sometimes I have some others, because you can't put somebody in between the voters. That's why we have an election. So if they don't like it, they can get rid of us. They like it, they can reelect us. But to put this in between the voters and hand over all the power to unelected boards and we don't even know who they are, you ask tomorrow, who's on these? We don't even know. And then they say they don't have to answer because they are private. Well, if you're private, do private money. So this is what I don't want. I don't want to give an impression that this is how Hamilton County is being run. Now, maybe it was run like this for 234 years before we got here. But that's why the people who elected, new leadership. And I ain't gonna speak for them, they'll speak for themselves, but that's why they elected me, to shake this thing up, open up the process and find out what the hell is going on down there at the county. Because it's been an ATM machine. So this is not the way. I'm not saying I'm against an arena, but this ain't the way to get one. Now, I want an amateur sports facility and I've been elected by 218,000 people. So it has to be on the table. If we putting this on the table, it's a $91 billion industry. Scholarships, activities every single day, and can bring in something out in the county So I just want to put that on the table, nothing personal against these folks, but if there is an election, I know it gets silly, but if you think you gonna run and you gonna run against Hamilton County, then I got to respond. And I don't think you want me responding. Because I don't get in your business of what y'all doing down there. We have done some phenomenal things up here and we are in a negotiation, will be eventually, with this Bengal thing. And we don't have the money, we trying to take the burden off the taxpayers. So I just wanted to highlight that. Mr. Ludo, I know you down and then there'll be someone to say, well, we didn't have nothing to do. I've never seen anything this council has done against its leadership in the four years. I've never seen them come against leadership. So I can't imagine leadership saying, oh, I'm not calling, I'm not with them, but they've never stood up. They've always moved as a unit. So these are the two names that was out there, but I just wanted to say, I just was, I found it appalling that you have a letter to the editor opinion piece telling us what to do. Knowing that we trying to deal with cuts, we're trying to deal with grandma keeping our house, we're trying to keep the small business going, we're trying to get these little business districts in these neighborhoods, we got Small Business Day coming up, we trying to connect them with help. We trying to make sure that there's no taxation without participation. So I just wanted to highlight that, I don't, again, I don't speak for my colleagues, I speak because we're all each elected individually, we don't run together, we don't, we not a package, we can't run, we can't even talk to each other. But because we can't, I wanted my colleagues to know what I thought about this. And we have got to stop having these independent boards that deal with government money and take the taxpayers' power away. I don't want to do that, because that's what we do. That's what happens. They elect us, we green, we get here and we give it, we're not giving away, but we give it away to some other group and say, get it out of the hands of the politicians. You get it out the hands of the politicians, you getting it out the hands of the voters, the taxpayers, that's really what you're saying. Get it out the hands of the taxpayers. So grandma ain't got no, she ain't got no equal power. And then put it with these boards that we don't even, I don't know the names, who they are. They come down here every other month with a new deal, but guess what? We got to get some government help. Because the government money is all that's out there. The private money has dried up or they done held it up. It ain't like when I was on City Council. Private money was coming in. All I hear now is private people on boards telling the government what to do with their money. So that's grandma's money. That's the guy that's out here trying to pay and take care of their family's money. So I wanted to be clear because I think we need a reset, whereas Commissioner Drehouse, her favorite word, we need to level set, level set this thing and get this relationship together. Because I don't want this to become, Hamilton County is getting beat up because I'm trying to get elected to City Council. Not me, but whoever's running. So Mr. Ludo, I wanted to give you that, so when you go in those meetings, they'll tell you, they'll whisper to you, are we not for it? I've never seen leadership and the council not be lockstep. Most of the votes are 9-0, maybe 8-1. And you mean to tell me now you ain't got no control? Not buying it. So this is a chance for us to level set. You know, I know they talking about the petitions and all that, but let me say that my petition was the people that elected me. And I know exactly what they want because they told me just not too long ago. So that's what I have, Commissioner President Drehouse, thank you for the time, but I just needed that because one article came out, then another one, I said, wait a minute, we gotta try to get this under control. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've got a couple of things. The primary one is related to the state. So we are advocating as Hamilton County, as the County Commissioners Association, for some relief from the state particularly related to the Indigent Defense Funding. Remember that this is something that the state is obligated to provide, they provide it through the counties, but as is sometimes the case, they don't fund it completely, they fund it at a percentage that is far less than 100%. And so we have been advocating ever since I've been a county official for eight years for 100% reimbursement for that. We deserve it, we're doing the function that would otherwise be a state function, and so we're advocating for a higher percentage again. We had, I think it was 26 amendments and Commissioner, you'll recognize the process where, you know, many amendments have to be offered to the budget that's been presented by the governor. I think it was 26 amendments from 26 different members about this issue, advocating for a higher percentage. So we had a lot of success with that, it was bipartisan, and then they were also advocating for the 911 fees. So we've had some success with the legislature so far, don't know if it gets into the budget, but at least there are advocates there, both on the Republican side and the Democrat side, fighting for county commissioners. And I'm grateful that CCAO was so effective in their advocacy and we all sit and are part of that organization. The other thing I was going to mention is the HCARC, we talked about that earlier. I did want to thank Megan Gosny and Abby Fritsch for putting that together. You know, we have been together for 10 years, I wasn't, none of us were here when this started. Greg Hartman started the, what was at that time, the Heroin Coalition, it is now the Addiction Response Coalition. And so we've done quite a bit of work, the numbers are declining significantly here in Hamilton County when it comes to overdose deaths. So while that is something to get excited about, we're still losing hundreds of people in this county to overdose deaths. And so we've got this great collective working on this and we celebrated that for the day a couple of days ago. But one of the most impactful things was the panel discussion in the afternoon, talking about the history of HCARC. And then we had a film presentation of the families, the parents who have lost children to addiction. And it was very powerful and I'm very, very grateful for them stepping up and being vulnerable in that space and providing hope to families that have also lost loved ones or have loved ones who are struggling with the issue of addiction. So thanks to all that participated in that and thanks to you all for being so supportive of the initiative over the years. I also went out to the St. Vincent de Paul Ribbon Cutting out in Western Hills, they've expanded their pharmacy out there, it is much more accessible to people, it's got its own door now, you don't have to go through the retail space to get to the pharmacy, they've expanded it. And it is a great offering for folks that live on the west side of Cincinnati. So congratulations to St. Vincent de Paul for the work that they do. Something else, I think that was mentioned earlier, I too was on the Human Services Chamber call, and they wanted to impress upon us the impacts of potential federal reductions to funding for the myriad of organizations that are members of the Hamilton, or the Human Services Chamber. And so as we do this exercise internally, and I know Anson Turley is leading that, to give us the inventory of where federal money hits county government here in Hamilton County so that we know what exactly is in jeopardy here. And we need to know this as we move through and as we try to keep track of what's happening at the federal government. The Human Services Chambers, member organizations, and it's Free Store Food Bank, it's Tabard House, it's Glad House, it's all these organizations that do important work, they too are concerned about what's going on at the federal government. And so we're going to try to coordinate our effort here as Anson provides the information to us and we have a staff meeting about that, so we are fully informed on what's at risk. We also bring the Human Services Chamber in so that they can talk about the risks that they are facing because it's a broad community impact here. And I want to make sure that people understand it and that we have that information as well. So hopefully, beginning of April, we'll have that meeting, it'll be a staff meeting, maybe we can devote the whole meeting to that because I think it might take a minute, because we're going to have questions about that. But thank you to Anson for working to put that inventory together. I think it's really important that we level set the conversation to make sure what we're talking about as we try to keep track and have the whiplash of what's happening at the federal government. At least we'll have that inventory in front of us. And then lastly, I was going to mention Xavier as well. I didn't stay up for the game, I just couldn't, but super excited that Xavier is in the March Madness, in the brackets, it's so exciting to have a team down here. As you say, it's the only team down here, so that's the bad news, but the good news is that Xavier, you know, as you said, pulled it out last night, and so I'm really excited to continue to bet on Xavier as they move through the brackets. So thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Reese, we're both sports fans. With that, I'm finished. Jeff Aludo, I'm going to turn it to you, I know we've got one by leave and I'm happy to handle that, but I didn't know if you had anything else on your agenda.
Commissioner, can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
On the, because I thought that was really good that Mike Morowski put together, when we have that staff meeting, do you think maybe partner with them and maybe they can be here?
That's what I'm saying.
That's what you're thinking?
Yeah, the Human Services, Mike Morowski and maybe some of the members will be here in attendance so that we can learn what impacts us internally, but then also what impacts us externally through the Human Services Chamber.
That's awesome, thank you.
They'll be here, yep.
I thought initially, we were going to have our staff people and commissioners be a part of it so they could get direct impact from dialogue with us and then pull in outside entities.
Yes, so Anson is pulling together, as I said, the inventory so that we can ask questions of that. I thought it would be helpful to have the two things happen together, so that's one conversation, but then also to say, well, that's not the only conversation. We also have these impacts to all these nonprofits, we partner with all of these organizations. And so as they worry about our funding through CDBG and Home, they also have additional funding sources that they're concerned about and what there are the broader impacts to the community. So I was hoping we could roll those two things together at the staff meeting and devote the whole staff meeting to this topic.
Well, that's actually what I brought up last week, the nonprofits that will be impacted, so, okay.
Just trying to roll it all together. So that we're not having one conversation one day and a similar conversation another day. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners, and that was actually the item that I had that I was just going to mention since all three offices had talked about it. And Anson is continuing to work on that, we've received some initial information on it. It is not insubstantial in terms of the dollars flowing to the county or flowing through the county, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. Much of that flows through some, a lot of our levy agencies, things of that nature, some of our social services agencies, but a lot of the dollars as well are funding for things that are really core services of the county as well, so emergency management, community development block grants, home partnership grants, which fund a lot of the county's core affordable housing work. So we're, Anson and I right now are in the process of taking some of the bigger chunks that we have found and drilling down into them so that when we meet with the board, we can have a detailed conversation, not just about the amount of money, but exactly where those dollars go. So we'll be looking to get that report to you in advance of the discussion, then looking forward the discussion with the board on the details.
Can I also ask that the agencies that are impacted, Nick Crossley for instance, Michael Patton for instance?
We'll certainly invite.
Are here also because I do think we're going to have a lot of questions about what this might look like.
Yes, absolutely. And Commissioner, I think the by leave item I have today is actually an appointment, so I don't know if you wanted to take that?
Yeah, happy to do it. So this is an appointment to the TID, this is the city's appointment, it's Greg Long. They have had the individual that was here, it was John Brazina, here in the past, has been promoted to a city manager assistant position, and so Greg Long is now taking his place on the TID. So they've asked us to approve this. If there's no conversation, I'm going to move that we approve a by leave number one.
Second. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you. We have one regular agenda item, the county engineer is with us, Eric Beck. Good morning, still morning, yep.
Yes, good morning. Just one item, it is regarding a communication that was received by the board and sent to my office for review regarding a name change in the city of Forest Park on a road from John Charles Estates Drive to John Charles Drive. We have reviewed this, there is no action required by the board, since it's in the city of Forest Park, they've already passed a resolution. The engineer's office will coordinate with the county. The engineer's office will coordinate with the county auditor and planning a development to ensure the necessary edits are made to the mapping.
Thank you. I thought we did have an item related to this on the agenda. Am I incorrect on that? About the renaming of this street?
There is one item on the agenda. It's on as a regular agenda item. So I don't know if it's.
So there's nothing on the consent?
On the regular item, you'll receive the report.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we will, as we go, approve and accept for the record these items. Okay. Any questions for the?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Jeff, we're going to move into the consent agenda.
Commissioners, your consent agenda is as follows. Items two through four are the auditor's statement of financial transactions for the months of December, January and December of '24, January of '25, and February of '25. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the agreement with, the five-year agreement with Developmental Disability Services for their receipt and distribution of tax levy proceeds. This is in the amount of $604 million. So this is a very large amount. But it is a, it is a, is one of our larger property tax levies. Commissioners, was voted on this past November by the voters of Hamilton County. Again, it's a five-year agreement, extends through 2029. I know Leah Snyder from DDS is here, Lisa Webb is here. If there are any questions on this item as we, as you look to vote on the consent agenda. Item six is a resolution, is resolution number four, amending the scope of services and the consulting agreement with PFM Financial Advisors. There's no change to the rate on that. It's just amending the, setting the annual budget and the scope of services. Item seven is a budget adjustment, number 12, for state grants. This is a transfer in a probation grant as well as appropriating personnel costs for a human trafficking grant in the sheriff's office. Item number eight are the bid awards and contracts executed by the purchasing department for February of 2025 at $2.68 million. Item nine is a resolution authorizing the award of ITB 18-25. This is our fuel contract with Hightower Petroleum as well as Petroleum Traders Corporation. This is the fuel contract that we use for county services as well as many of the independent municipalities that we contract with. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing an MOU with, between the environmental services and the sheriff's office. This is for illegal dumping enforcement at $462,000. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Debra Kempe and the board on behalf of facilities for our building automation system. This is at $968,000 over three years. Item 12 is resolution P054-25. This is for the purchase of a F-250 in facilities for $65,000. Item 13 is an item authorizing the use of credit cards in common pleas court at $49,600. Item 14 is an item authorizing the use of credit cards in common pleas drug treatment and recovery court in the amount of $24,000. Items 20, or I'm sorry, items 15 through 21 are JFS items. Item 15 is an agreement with the clerk for child support cases, $81,647. Item 16 is an amendment of an original single source agreement with Life Start, Inc. for placement services at $100,000. Item 17 is an agreement with Changing Lives Youth Services for group home services at $500,000. Item 18 is an agreement, is authorizing an agreement with Lighthouse Youth Services for shelter care services at $800,000. Item 19 is authorizing an agreement, this was with juvenile court, for child support orders and 4D entries. This is for $1.451 million. Item 20 is an amendment of an original single source agreement with Habitat for Excellence for independent living services at $2.31 million. Item 21 is an agreement with the sheriff's office for the serving of arrest warrants and notifications relating to child support cases. This is at $1.3 million. Item 22 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Inspection Bureau incorporation. This is for electrical inspections required by the Hamilton County Building Code. There is no cost to the county for this as it is paid through the receivers of that service. That is item number 22. Item number 23, I believe, although it's, yes, item number 23 is the report of no objection to one liquor permit in the sheriff's office. Item 24 is the monthly investment report for February 25 through the treasurer's office. And that is your consent agenda, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jeff. And we do have a couple of folks in the audience related to the DDS item and the IBI item, if there are any questions. I have a question about item number 10. So this is the one about illegal dumping for the solid waste management plan. Is this an expansion of what we currently offer related to illegal dumping? Or is this keeping things as they are?
Commissioner, I think this is over three years, I believe. So I believe that's probably what you're seeing in terms of the dollar amount.
Yeah, because this individual is a deputy that goes around the entire county addressing illegal dumping issues. And yeah, I thought it was just one individual. This looks like more than one, but if it's over a period of time.
It's one over a period of time, right. And he does do great work. We've actually had him on for a podcast before to explore everything that he does in terms of the way that he gets into individual cases. Does a great job just trying to make sure that we keep the community clean.
Yep, okay. All right, great. Commissioner Summer Dimas, any questions or comments?
Yes, a couple of comments. Last week, as I indicated, I provided a PowerPoint that the data indicated that 62% of nonprofits will be impacted by cuts to different federal programs. So I know we're talking about getting everybody together, but it was 62% will be impacted. And just in general, the numbers of items on here, there are lots of grants. We're approving for confirmation. And also whatever monies we can, that we have allocated, I believe we should get them out as quickly as possible for approval by the board. I'm looking at item five as it relates to DDS. That's another nonprofit. And so that may be impacted. Item seven, we're talking about state grants. Item nine, I'm glad that we're diversifying our vendors for the fuel assignment or issue of contracts. And under JFS, we have about eight resolutions to pass. And on the, it was on our Human Services webinar. They talked about 68% of the cost for services has gone up, 68%. But only 9% of the number of children that are receiving it has gone down. So we're, you know, in a quagmire almost, like how do we serve all these children with not enough money? We will be impacted. I have no doubt about it. JFS will be impacted. And so when I look at all these resolutions, item 16, family placement. Item 17, group homes. Item 18, crisis stabilization and shelter care services. Item 20, independent living services. These are people we're talking about. And whether or not we're going to be able to serve them the way we need to serve them, I pray that we will be able to do that. But I think it's great we're having our meeting early April to discuss those things. But it is coming down and we need to be on point as we look at what we can spend, getting it out now, how we can have strategies to make sure that the people need the services are getting them with less money. That's all I have.
Thank you. And you bring up a point, and I mentioned this to Jeff too. I don't know if we can pull this together, but it's not only federal funding, it's also state funding. And so it might be helpful to have us understand the impacts of state funding. I mean, it's LGF, generally speaking, but there are other sources of funding from the state that are coming down that might be impacted here. So if we can roll that into the presentation, that would be, that would really round out the conversation about all the funding that we're getting and the impacts of any changes happening at the federal state level. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you. Item number nine, I believe, is a procurement item.
Nine was a petroleum contract?
No, I want to go to the.
Eight is the.
Number eight, I'm sorry. Item number eight, I wanted to do a little deeper dive in here. There are several items dealing with Paycor Stadium. When it says come stadia and parking, is that the restricted fund that we're referring to?
Yes, it's going to, it's going to, it could be a couple of different funds there, Commissioner, depending upon where exactly that is. So if it says stadium parking, it could be something in one of the stadiums, which would mean it comes out of the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. If it is in one of our parking garages, it would come out of the parking fund most likely.
Both of them restricted funds?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Now, I'm just trying to get a grip on it. There was a report that the bingo ownership did some renovations and concessions was mentioned. And then on here, it says we're, we now are replacing ceiling tile in the concessions. Was the ceilings not included in the renovation?
Yeah, I think the renovation was probably more for the actual equipment itself as opposed to the typical, for the most part, when we're doing improvements, it's to the structure of the actual building or the architectural work in the building.
Okay, great. Now, the other thing it talked about that we are purchasing, we're purchasing 24 new security cameras for Paycor Stadium. And I am definitely for security. Will these cameras, where would they go? Because we have some cameras that are in that area across the street and with, between the stadium and the Cincinnati Black Music Walker fame and the stadium. But the footage, they said, goes, we can't have access to the footage. Will we have access to this footage for Paycor?
That's something I'll have to follow up on, Commissioner. I don't have the answer to that right now. But I can find out the exact locations of them and whether we have access to that footage.
Yeah, I think we need to somehow because everybody said they don't know where the footage goes. Is it going to the police? Is it going to, is the cameras working? Can we get a inventory to make sure all cameras are working? Because I think there was an incident in front of Paycor across the street, right in front of Paycor. And they said, well, we don't know who got the footage. You know, it was just kind of, we got cameras, but are they working? And who got the footage? And who's catching the people that's doing it? I think that's very, very important.
Happy to check up on that.
Yeah, cameras are great to catch stuff after it happens. I'm trying to get people to be there to stop it from happening. And that's why security is super important. So I just wanted to, how that's all tied in so that people, you know, know that these are cameras that work and there will be ramifications if you do something. The other thing we had, we're painting the walls in the Alter Fiber Layers Lounge. So is that our lounge now or is that Alter Fiber sponsored? Do they come and put the money up? Is that our lounge, I guess, is what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, it would be an area that we're responsible for, for that service in.
Okay, just wanted that clarification. Yeah, because there's several items in here. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood that. And then my last thing on here, Chaplain Architecture. And it says that architectural services for construction projects, fire door compliance upgrades, animal shelter renovation. But this resolution we're passing would give the purchase director the ability to sign off without coming back to us.
They actually already have that. And so they have signed that. The contract with Chaplain allows task orders to be added on through the purchasing director. But it still shows up in a report back to the board that you then received for the record. So that's what you're doing.
We're just receiving this.
You are receiving this report.
So we don't, $703,442, we're just receiving it. We don't have no authority. Now, the rest of them, are we receiving this for the record?
You're receiving this entire report for the record.
These are already been signed off?
Signed and executed by the purchasing department in February of '25, correct.
Okay, so item number eight would just be received for the record. Am I correct?
Item number eight on the agenda, yes, is receiving for the record, correct.
Okay. That helps me understand.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that we approve and receive for the record, items two through 24.
Second. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Yes. Oh, second.
All right, Commissioner. Commissioner Dreehouse? Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.